It's time for our regularly scheduled commission meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, today it is Commissioner Ortiz's turn to do the Pledge of Legions and the invocation. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the day. We thank you for everything that you've given us. Lord, we ask that you just continue to bless this town, bless this state, bless this world. Lord, we just ask that you continue to be in our hearts. Lord, we ask that you be with our loved ones, be with our parents, our kids, our brothers and sisters. Lord, we just ask you that you protect them. Be with our first responders, be with our police, fire, EMS, Lord, all those who are working hard in this community to keep everyone safe. Lord, we ask you to just be a blessing in us, on us, on our hearts, and just help us to do the work that you provide us to do in this room, Lord. Help us to make good decisions. And, Lord, it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Okay, next is approval of the minutes. Did anybody see any changes or corrections that needed to be made? Okay, they stand approved. Up next is public comment. This is a time for members of the audience and the public to come on up and talk about anything that is not on the agenda. You will have five minutes, and when you do come up, please state your name. Okay?
Mayor and Commissioners, Item 6A, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a request from Beth Coaksal, Livwell Finney County Health Coalition to allow the mayor to proclaim this week of October 23rd, the week of October 23rd through 31st, 2023, as Red Ribbon Week in Garden City, Kansas.
I'm going to approve the proclamation as presented.
Second.
Case been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anything, Beth, that you wanted to say before I read the proclamation?
Sure. So, my name is Beth Coaksal, I'm from Livwell Finney County. And just a reminder, Livwell has received a drug-free communities grant. The purpose of this grant is aimed at mobilizing community leaders to identify and respond to the drug problems you need to communities and change local community environmental conditions that are tied to substance use. Across the country, more than 700 coalitions received funding for this, and we were one of them. We'll be working with representatives across 12 sectors to organize and meet to address local youth substance use. And together, we'll be driven by local conditions here in Finney County to implement local solutions to help build safe, healthy, and drug-free communities. So those 12 sectors that will be working together are young people, parents, businesses, media, school, youth-serving organizations, law enforcement, religious or pastoral organizations, civic volunteer groups, healthcare professionals, state, local government agencies, and then any other local organizations that want to be involved in reducing substance use. So we're excited to get to work on this, and our first meeting will be October 23rd as a kickoff to Red Ribbon Week. And community members can get involved by contacting me at Livwell. We are encouraging anyone that wants to support this initiative to wear red ribbons the week of Red Ribbon Week and a problem for all of you and everybody in the audience too. So I'll go ahead and hand it out.
Okay. So then I'll go ahead and read this, and then Beth, do you want to picture afterwards with the people?
Yes, please.
Okay, all right. So whereas alcohol and drug and other drug abuse in this nation has reached epidemic stages, and whereas it is important that visible unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs, and whereas the National Family Partnership is sponsoring the National Red Ribbon Campaign, offering citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles, no use of illegal drugs, no illegal use of legal drugs, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through 31st, and whereas Livwell Finney County has received a drug-free communities grant and will be committing resources to assist the people of Garden City, Kansas, in working towards a reduction in youth alcohol and marijuana use, and whereas businesses, governments, parents, law enforcement, media, medical, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service organizations, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign, and whereas the city of Garden City, Kansas, further commits to its support to ensure the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign. Now therefore, I, Deborah Euler, Mayor of the city of Garden City, do hereby proclaim the week of October 23rd through 31st, 2023, as Red Ribbon Week. In the city of Garden City, and encourage citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free state. Sign and seal the 17th day of October, 2023. All right, so we can come on up.
We have some of our board members here. I want to see an update.
I'm here.
I'm here.
I'm here.
No, I won't.
I'm here.
I'm here.
I'm here.
I'm here.
I'm here.
I'm here.
Everybody looks here, smile.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, Item B, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a request from Dana Nanega, Garden City Community College, to allow the mayor to proclaim the day of November 8th, 2023, as National First Generation Day in Garden City, Kansas.
I'll make the motion, Mayor, to approve the proclamation as presented.
I'll second.
Case been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, and I will read this at an event at a later date.
Mayor and Commissioners, Item 6C, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a request from downtown retailers to waive the sign ordinance and authorize signs to be located in the city right-of-way on Kansas Avenue from Campus Street West to Second Street, at the Friends and Frogs area, Third Street and Kansas Avenue, and two private businesses on the 1900 block of Mary Street for the Downtown Vision Sippin' Shop event from November 5th through 11th, 2023. The event itself is scheduled for Saturday, November 11th.
I'll make the motion to approve the request to waive the sign ordinance and authorize signs to be located in the city right-of-way of Kansas Avenue and Campus Drive and west to Second Street at the Friends and Frogs area, Third Street and Kansas Avenue, and at two private businesses on the 1900 block of Mary Street for the Downtown Vision Sippin' Shop event, November 5th through 11th. The event itself is scheduled for Saturday, November 11th.
I'll make the motion to approve the request to waive the sign ordinance and authorize signs to be located in the city right-of-way of Kansas Avenue and Campus Drive and west to Second Street at the Friends and Frogs area, Third Street and Kansas Avenue, and at two private businesses on the 1900 block of Mary Street for the Downtown Vision Sippin' Shop event, November 5th through 11th.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item D, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a request from Russell Child Development Center to waive the sign ordinance and authorize four banners to be placed on the fence at Escaville Soccer Field and Fleming Street, at Fleming Street and Mary Street, from October 23rd, 2023, to November 18th, 2023, for the Fantasy Tree Festival and holiday home tours.
I'll make the motion to approve the request to waive the sign ordinance and authorize the banners at those locations.
Second.
Case been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, just right quick, is that going to interfere with the vision for people turning on to, I mean, is that going to impede?
We'll make sure the signs aren't close to the.
Okay, that was my only, I mean, how close that fence is to the street there and everything.
Mayor and Commissioners, our first amendment actually places those signs, and so they will place them back out of the line of sight.
Okay, that was my only question on that. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item E, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a request from Western Kansas Community Foundation to waive the sign ordinance and have banners placed at Third and Kansas and on the fence at Escaville Field, as well as a privately-owned lot at 1701 Mary Street, Lee Richardson Zoo's West Fence and Stevens Park, from November 14th through 28th, for drawing awareness to Match Day.
Mayor, I move that the governing body approve the request to waive the sign ordinance and authorize banners be placed at Third Street and Kansas Avenue, on the fence at Escaville Soccer Field, at Fleming Street and Mary Street, a privately-owned lot located at 1701 Mary Street, Lee Richardson Zoo West Fence, and Stevens Park, from November 14th to 28th, 2023, for Match, 2023 Match Day.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Under report of the city manager, you have some updates there. There's no presentations scheduled for any of those, but if you have any questions on any of them, we'd be happy to stand for those. All right, meetings of note. If there's RSVPs, please coordinate those through C-Lin and/or Corey. I think we're ready for Item 9A, the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2589-2023A.
I'll make the motion to approve appropriation ordinance number 2589-2023A.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item E, the governing body has asked to consider and approve an amendment to the Garden City subdivision regulations regarding development agreements, guarantees for the completion and quality of public improvements. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2967-2023.
Mayor and Commissioners, our staff is requesting to amend the subdivision regulations for the security and guarantee of completion improvements. The proposed amendment includes the following: no acceptance of contractor bonds or dual agro-dee bonds, new standard for the city's discretion on terms and conditions of the bonds, shortened statute of limitations, no arbitration or mediation provisions, and choice of law and venue in any other state besides Kansas, some bond alternatives of cashier's check escrow account and irrevocable letter of credit with terms and conditions, issuing building permits prior to the completion of infrastructure like curb and gutter, performance bond posted prior to starting infrastructure construction, and the issuance of certificate of occupancies after acceptance of infrastructure and a maintenance on issue. Your alternatives are the governing body may approve the amendment as presented, the governing body may not approve the amendment as presented, or the governing body may provide staff with an alternative. The staff would recommend the governing body approve the ordinance as presented.
I'll make the motion to approve the amendment as presented.
I'll second ordinance number 2967-2023.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item B, the governing body has asked to consider and approve changes to the Public Safety Advisory Board as established under Resolution 3006, 2023. If approved, this would be Resolution Number 3058-2023. Chiefs.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. May of 2022, the Garden City Police Department and the Garden City Fire Department created the Joint Advisory Board, Public Safety Advisory Board for both agencies. Driving force behind the Joint Advisory Board was to accommodate public interest in participating and to include all public safety departments in the city of Garden City. Recently, the GCPD and GCFD met and discussed adding another position to the board, a Finney County citizen representative. Because GCFD also collaborates with the insert of Finney County jurisdiction, it would be beneficial to add a Finney County citizen contribute to the board. A resolution establishing changes to the number of members on the Public Safety Advisory Board is attached. Alternatives before you either approve, the governing body may approve the resolution. Alternative to the governing body may reject the motion to provide staff with public guidance. Staff recommends alternative.
So my last question was chief, are you, how are you going to choose, are you going to have, how are you going to choose this? Are you going to have the board choose them, or are you going to just do applications just like you normally do? Okay, okay. And so they'll reside in, outside the city limits and in the county?
Chiefs, I believe we discussed that the resolution would reflect that it would be a county resident living outside the corporate limits, and this still says county resident. So if we approve it, is the intent to leave it as just county resident, or is the intent to have it be someone?
So we must have added a whole community resident, so we wrap that in there.
So a county and a whole community resident? So, so someone outside the incorporated city limits and then a whole community resident? Yeah, what's that ordinance number? I'm sorry, I missed it.
We would need to change that to be accurate.
3058.
Yeah, everybody that lives in the city of Garden City is a county resident.
Right, so that's.
So if the intent is to add somebody that doesn't live inside the city limits of Garden City, I believe the resolution should reflect that.
Okay. So we'll resubmit that and then vote on it at a later date?
Okay. So, I'm sorry, what's the resolution number I?
3058. We could approve it with.
With the.
With that change. Then we can just make it reflect that change. Yes, correct.
Was it?
3058.
Okay. So I move that we approve resolution number 3058, 2023, establishing the changes of the number of the, number of members of the Public Safety Advisory Board of the city of Garden City to reflect a Finney County resident outside the incorporated city limits and also a whole community resident.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Chief, first of all, I was thinking, you might be able to carry the jaws of life with you, and then that way you'll match all the others.
I'm here, sir.
Yeah, that's right.
Item C, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution abating a condition at 908 East Evans, or 908 Evans Street. And if approved, this would be Resolution 3059-2023. Trent?
Mayor and Commissioners, according to have a violation on Evans Street. This consists of a black vehicle and gray vehicle. The property owners were sent two orders of violations, the first one being on August 17th, 2023, and the second one September 18th, 2023. The property owners called to get an extension after the first order violation was sent out. A follow-up was performed, and violations were still present. After the second order violation was sent out, registration was turned in for the black vehicle, but not the gray vehicle. The black vehicle was still unoperable with flat tires and needs towing around the vehicle. Property owner has made, has been made aware of pending violations. The follow-up was performed for the last order violation, and none of the pending violations were brought up to compliance according to Section 30, 1037. The alternatives before you today, alternative number one, the governing body may approve the task resolution. Alternative number two, the governing body may not approve the task resolution. Staff's recommendation is approval of the task resolution. Fiscal notice being cross-assessable, and a little different than other cases, I believe the property owners are here, and any questions be on your behalf.
Okay. When you come up, please state your name for the record, and then you. Hi, welcome.
I just slid in at the last minute.
No, you're fine?
You're okay.
We're Mr. and Mrs. Marcia Elsabamantes. I'm here, this is Marshall and Marcia. And we've had a bad year, okay? Yeah. The gray vehicle, we donated that to Hypless Public Radio. They like to take those. So it wasn't good. The black vehicle is a Mustang, and we have the license and rest insurance for that. It's actually a kind of a fixture for us, but out of the violations that we were cited with, we did try to move on them as quickly as possible. Not as an excuse, but been fighting breast cancer, yeah, this summer from March till right before it came here today. And that seems to be taking up a lot of our time, but this is just something I guess we really need to take time for. The other violation is the weeds, we've been working on that. The wood that was in front of our home from a tree, that's gone. It's all gone. What else is gone?
I am, some of the trash on the side of the.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
On the trash can, there's some people who are there, and they are making me responsible for it, and I cannot get it anyplace. I mean, I get rid of that four times a year, because all the neighbors put trash there, but it always comes to me because the trash can is on my side.
And we were told it's because all the tractors will remember something in the trash can, so we buy that.
I give a little, explaining a little from if any of you are, which is the.
Just a little from our point of view. We.
Sure. You can hand it over to her.
violations.
Okay. So, so do you have an idea of when you'll be able to bring some of these into compliance? A date that would?
Well, the vehicles are already.
Okay.
The wood that's cited as being in front of the house, that people just drive by and go, can you have your wood? No?
Right.
So, sent out to good homes. What else? The weeds, do you want to add?
I have taken care of all of them. All of the trash that it shows, I don't know, is.
Yeah, we have it right up there.
Okay, oh, see, that's gone.
Okay.
Yeah, all of that is gone, and trash over here on the side of the trash can, I already put it away too.
Okay.
I explained to the person from the city that on the other side of the trash can, I consider that my side of the trash can, and I have cleaned it three times already, but on the other side, the other neighbor keeps putting stuff in there, and I didn't move that, I said, you know, I'm taking care of this one side, and he's putting stuff on that side, he can take care of that.
Okay.
And she goes, no, the trash can is on your.
Can I have you speak into the microphone real quick?
Thank you, I appreciate that.
That way the people who are watching can hear what you're saying.
And Mayor, if we could have Trent come up, I believe the case is specific. Well, they probably received notice on some other violations, and we appreciate them bringing those into compliance. I think the matter at hand today is strictly the vehicles.
Okay.
The gray one's gone, that's taken care of.
Right.
If the title and registration or whatever is up to date on the black one, then the only matter remaining on, on anything that's on today's agenda is the operability of the, of the black Mustang.
Yes, that car, like my wife said, is done. And the black car, she told me that I could have a place and insurance and air the tire. I put another tire, it has air, it has everything, has place and insurance, but they don't, I feel that they don't want me to have that car in my backyard. That car is in my backyard. It's like 15 feet from the line of alley inside my property, and for some reason, I cannot have it or something, but I already have place, insurance, everything on it. But there is nobody to drive it because my son works out of state, sometimes closes three, four hours in the garden, and so we have that car there. He has no place to put it.
Sure.
And my backyard is divided into two parts. One part is for the front of the house, for trees, grass, garden, whatever, and the back is just for cars. Like if somebody's on my front, in my driveway, I just drive in the back.
Like a driveway. Mm-hmm.
So if you have the proof of the insurance and registration, I believe you just need to give that to Trent or meet him downstairs, and he can take care of that for you.
I already did.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. So Trent, any?
Which sound like they've addressed it with the tires.
Okay.
And so it says they replaced them as well. But we know that we have, we have the registration comment already, so we're probably.
So this one's probably.
To verify it, so if you want to table or just.
Okay, we can. All right, all right, great. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming.
Makes all the difference.
Yeah, it makes a huge difference, and, and, yes, on your journey. So, thank you.
We also have problems, I kind of want to address this, because it seems like every year comes back, trash on the alley.
Okay.
And they told me to call Solid Waste. I said, you know, that can have been there, we lived in that house over 25 years, and that's where that can be disassembled.
Okay.
But I don't know if I can move it or not.
Yeah, we'll see if we can.
I was going to say, I bet Trent, you can work with Trent, and he could help address that as well.
And we'll see if we can open up some communication with the neighbors.
Yes.
I appreciate that.
Yes. All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And thank you for listening.
Thank you. You brought, that's great.
Thank you for coming, it really does make a difference.
Yeah, because your mom and she had a gin.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we will table that?
Table, yeah.
I don't think we need a motion to table something.
No.
Okay. Okay.
Item D, Mayor and Commissioners, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution abating a condition at 802 Park Place. Since we didn't use 3059 on the last issue, this resolution, if passed, would be Resolution Number 3059-2023.
If you guys have any questions on this, we can go through it. We have a couple more vehicle nuisances and tree nuisances.
I move to approve Resolution 3059-2023.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item E, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution at 1707 C Street. If approved, this would be Resolution Number 3060-2023.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution Number 3060-2023.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a tree nuisance resolution abating a tree violation at 1220 Parkwood Lane. If approved, it would be Resolution 3061-2023.
I move to approve Resolution Number 3061-2023.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item G is also a tree resolution, and if approved, this would be Resolution Number 3062-2023, abating nuisance condition at 2002 Sioux Drive.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution Number 3062-2023.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Trent.
Thank you.
Item 12A, the governing body has asked to consider and authorize staff to negotiate with Warfeland LLC for the annexation of real property located at 3210 East Mary Street in the city of Garden City, or into the city of Garden City.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Staff met with Mr. Mark Warf from Warfeland LLC on October 9th, 2023, to discuss his request for consideration to be annexed into the city of Garden City's corporate bounds. The property to be considered is located at 3210 East Mary Street, and it's approximately 11.05 acres, and it's currently zone general commercial, and it's contiguous to the current city boundaries. Mr. Warf is asking for all city services to be provided to the property should be approved of natural annexation. That would include water, wastewater, electricity, and solid waste services. Mr. Warf is also willing to negotiate the transfer of water rights that would come with this piece of property. The water rights, in no identity, in your memo, amounts to 480 acre-feet of water, which is pretty considerable, in ways. The water rights, and no identity within your memo, amounts to 480 acre feet of water, which is pretty considerable. And he's willing to negotiate with us on that as well. So if you approve today, staff will begin negotiating with Mr. Warf on this annexation and the water rights that would be considered going with it. Alternatives would be that you may authorize staff to begin negotiations with Warfland LLC on this piece of property and bringing it into the city. Or you may not authorize staff to do so. Staff recommends that the governing body authorize staff to negotiate with Warfland LLC and prepare an ordinance for annexation that would be brought back to the governing body for consideration at a later meeting. And there would be more financial impact to the city to negotiate with this Mr. Warf. And I'm happy to answer any question you may have.
So what we need to, you know, how sometimes we have to go through the whole with the electrical provider? Do we have to go through that whole situation?
If you authorize us to go ahead and negotiate with Mr. Warf, and he does go to deep decide to move forward with the annexation, you'd annex the property and then would start that process with remil electric.
Okay.
Just like we did with the latest one with the Harmon property. They chose not to negotiate for a franchise agreement on that piece of property. We go through the same process.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Mike, is this the... The property is the one in blue? Or is the property come... Because that's all one field right now. Is it platted separate? And then would this remain in the county?
No, that's... That little piece where the cursor art, that would be included in this piece of property.
So that blue boundary is not the boundary of what's being requested? It's the whole, this whole, what's a field?
Field, yes.
Okay.
Well, certainly in our notice on the electric utility stuff, we need to, I think it would be in our best interest to have the polygon match the property that we're describing.
As we move forward and after everything winds up correctly.
Yeah, I move that we authorize the staff to begin negotiations with Warfland LLC and prepare an ordinance for the annexation to be brought to the governing body for consideration at a subsequent meeting.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
So I just have a question on the water rights, Mike. Do you would negotiate that at the same time? Does it all get done, all wrapped into one big package? Is that how you're going to work on that? Or will it be separate?
I think it would depend upon how Mr. Warf wants to do that.
Okay.
We'll do the annexation as one piece and separate the water negotiations, unless he just wants to include it and provide it to the city during this annexation.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Item B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve applying for the Community Wildfire Defense Grant. Chief.
Hello, Mayor and Commissioners.
Hello.
At the Garden City Fire Department, we approach by Kansas Forest Service regarding the grant opportunity called Community Wildfire Defense Grant. The CWDG is intended to help adverse local communities planning for their community's wildfire risk of wildfire. Priorities are that adverse communities in areas identified as having high or very high wildfire retention. The program provides funding to communities for two primary purposes. One, is to develop and revise a community wildlife protection plan and continue to implement projects described in the CWPP as less than ten years old. Historically, Kansas wildfires occur in rascals moving quickly but low intensity in the area. The CWPP project will be an extremely valuable opportunity to educate our community about wildfire risk mitigation. This is especially important for our most vulnerable population who may have significant trouble accessing the wildlife preservation resources. Anytime, 12.5% of families are in poverty. 9.8% of citizens have a disability. And 12% of our citizens are over the age of 65. If awarded this project, we'd analyze where our most vulnerable population resides to better understand wildfire risk and what can be done to mitigate those risks. Based on analysis, a review would be completed to consider creation of both ordinances and defensible space and brush abatement and for roof construction and commercial buildings located within the hazard areas. Finally, the project would help develop the fire hazard management analyzing the place for factors, fuels, climate response time, and evacuation risks. Alternative for you is the governing body may authorize staff to apply for the CWDG. Alternative two would be the governing body may deny the grant submission and provide for the grants. Staff recommends alternative one. The physical note of the CWDG requires a 10% match of final equal to $9,000. Staff will apply for a match waiver and an application waiver, which if approved, would require no match bill funding from GCOP to move forward with the grant. If the waivers aren't approved, GCOP will identify that a voucher code for the final match at a later date.
Well, congratulations that you have someone coming and actually offering you a grant opportunity. That's pretty impressive, so.
Just a quick question with the... With this grant, I noticed talking about the roof construction and commercial building locations, how will that affect... We have a goal of building 4,000 homes by 2030. How will that affect our current ordinances to meet that? Is that going to increase the cost of construction in our community? And the other thing is, we've got goals to enhance our retail and industry development. Is that going to impede that?
Without looking into their part of contractor covenant and evaluating what they're thinking as a risk in their target areas, definitely through the 4,000 homes, while writing the ordinances and applying imminent and ongoing with this CWPP grant.
Okay. It's just, I don't want us to have a grant, do it, and then get us into a bind where we're trying to achieve a goal. This is kind of creating a burden on that. That was my only concern on this.
Well, first, I think it's a plan. So it doesn't automatically get adopted just by having the plan. You'd have to take the action to change your codes. But it could tell you if there's risk. I think the idea, the plan is that you would go through development, you know, if that is identified, you would do it knowingly with the risks associated. And as a governing body, make kind of that value judgment of the potential of the fire risks.
Sure, sure.
And does the variable and material or the, I guess, the fire resistance, fire retardant nature of whatever material, if it costs more, is it worth requiring that? Or is there some other incentive that the city could build? I don't think having a plan forces your hand on anything other than kind of giving you knowledge of what the risks might be. And there's other alternatives too. They mentioned defensible space.
Sure.
Those types of things that may affect density.
I mean, when I read through that, I mean, it's great that we are coming to this. But when I read that, it was like, kind of put a pause on how is that going to impact some of our other goals and plans that we have in the community? And I was just asking, so. But thank you for the input on that.
Any other discussion?
I'll make the motion to authorize staff to apply for the CWDG grant.
Second.
Case been moved and seconded. Anything else? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Chief.
Item C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the Eagle Crest Edition Casco Homes Inc. repayment agreement amendment. The terms of the initial repayment agreement between the city of Garden City and Casco Homes Inc. was not met by the previous deadline. The parties have been working to negotiate agreeable terms to avoid the other options available to the city for satisfying unpaid obligations. The proposed agreement would have a small portion of the remaining $104,344.69 due to the city paid at the time of signing. Similar portions paid upon the sale of the three remaining lots in Eagle Crest Edition. The remaining balance will be paid in $1,000 monthly installments beginning in November 2023. The alternatives before the governing body are to approve the agreement as presented. You could consider approving it with amendments. Or if the governing body does not approve the agreement, appreciate your direction in collecting that debt in a different manner. Our recommendation would be to approve the negotiated agreement. And all of the revenues received as a result of this agreement will be booked as general fund revenue.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the agreement as presented.
I'll second.
Case been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item D is a request for an executive session pertaining to preliminary discussions related to the acquisition of real property. We don't anticipate any action taken after that item. So if the commission would like to take up the consent agenda and then the commission reports, we can conclude the broadcast of the meeting and then wrap up with the executive session. Right? In that case, item E is the consent agenda. If you want to approve all two items together, the appropriate motion would be to approve the consent agenda items one and two.
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda for items one and two.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Go ahead and we'll do commission reports first. Commissioner Ortiz.
Okay. Yeah, first, I think, just to kind of get it off out there, like the Battle of the Birds happened this last weekend with KH and Horse Good. And I know, I understand, like, these kids will end up playing together at the high school level. So I'm just like, I'm just kind of worried. My son plays for Horse Good, or for KH. And so there's always kind of a... It seems like there's a, you know, a rivalry. But in my eyes, I see that as not true. It shouldn't be a rivalry. It should be just an act of a football game, you know, these kids battling together. And then actually, like, after the game, I did see some, you know, congratulations, even though Horse Good won like 50 to six or something. So, but our seventh graders won. So it kind of balances out, I think, a little bit. But anyways, just, I think just for these kids' minds to be prepared for the high school level, I hope that they just get along once they see each other in the hallways at the high school and realize that this is, you know, this was just a game. It wasn't meant to be out of rivalry or out of hardship or anything like that. It's a sport. So I'm just hoping that they can understand and just take a moment to think about that and to, you know, and maybe their coaches will help them understand that as well as they become a team again. That's a big worry that I have, you know, with my son playing football and things. So for others out there too, for parents that are kind of thinking that same thing, I just hope and I pray that you guys, everyone just kind of, you know, sees their kids grow in that sport. It's a great sport. I've played football when I was in high school, and so it was fun, building that relationship with teammates and coaches and stuff, so. And being humble. I mean, I always praised my linemen because I was a running back. And even though I got a touchdown, I didn't get the touchdown. My lineman, who blocked, and they, you know, they helped me get that. So it was on them too. I know I can go on and on about sports, but I just wanted to get that out there. A big thing too that I've been... It's always been popping up on my social media as well is fire. And how do we get awareness out there for fire? There's a lot of things you can do. There's planning, you know, there's checking your extinguishers and things like that. There's fire blankets that you can get. There's smoke detectors in your house. All those are very, very important. And I just ask that everyone take a moment and look at batteries, you know, replace batteries and things like that. There are new devices out there too that you can link up through Bluetooth. And you don't need to hardwire in and spend so much on electricians to get those installed. So I just encourage you to go and check those out, install them in your home. Or, you know, like I said, the Bluetooth ones, you can add in your furnace room and it connects to your phone and it'll, you know, warn you and things. So I just, I think for that, it's very important that we just kind of keep educating about fire and safety and whatnot. Last thing, I think, just like to give thanks to the city cleanup. That was a great... I mean, the city looks awesome, amazing. The weather, you know, God provided us with moisture and things like that. So what a blessing that he has been on our city. And so I just give thanks to those workers who helped clean that up. Thank you.
Mr. Dick?
Well, I'll jump on the football comments and say congratulations to the high school for winning the hatchet. So that's always good to have a win there. And I do feel Commissioner Ortiz's rivalry. I went to KH and I have a T-shirt. But my kids, my oldest goes to Horse Good. She says I can't wear that. So I can see that. Had a good meeting yesterday with Realtors' meet and greet with the candidates. It was good to see everybody out and really good turnout, a lot of candidates there. So that was good. Went to the Ike Planning Session a couple weeks ago, whenever that was. Really good turnout for our district. We had standing room only in the room at the Clarion. Sounds like they got some good feedback. And I like the direction that KDOT is at least considering our highways. We're at least talking about expanding them instead of you get passing lanes or nothing. So that was a good meeting. And I think we are really proud about the turnout from not just Dodge and Liberal and everybody in our district that came up to that. And then finally, just been going around and talking to the community. And then one of the big themes that I've been seeing when going out and talking to everybody is just the optimism that our community members have for the future Garden City. And that's really good to see. Not every city has optimistic people that think that what we're doing is, we're doing good and we're moving in the right direction and look forward to things progressing. So it's just really nice to see that optimism as I talk to everybody. And I mean, that really is that first step to being able to continue to grow and keep on dreaming and keep on getting bigger. So it's been really nice to see. And that's it.
Commissioner Henroy.
So I want to echo Commissioner Dick's go buffs. That was awesome, seeing that happen. And so I did enjoy the mayor's video challenge. And I did think that was, I thought that was really nice. So maybe it's like you ought to go over and eat there just as a consolation prize. But no, I really enjoyed that. You know, today, when the couple came and talked a little bit about, you know, the issues with the ordinances and, you know, when you talked about the vehicles, you know, I was reminded that, you know, everyone's going through something. And so it really reminds me that, you know, being a good neighbor can really make a difference. And so, you know, we all have neighbors and sometimes I forget to check on mine. And so I was thinking about that. That was a really good reminder about what it looks like to be a good neighbor. You know, we all live next to these people. But you can't choose your neighbors or your relatives. Is that how it is? But I thought about, you know, really being a good neighbor and what that looks like, so. The other thing, we had a couple of freeze scares this last week, which I'm glad for the cooler weather. But, you know, disconnecting your hoses is so important and it can save you so much money. So just something, I mean, a freeze is coming, I mean, eventually. And so we just need to get ready for that. I just wanted to remind that. I really did appreciate the city cleanup. And if you watch them load the branches, they are really skilled at this. I mean, I'm not saying they could pick up a coin from the street, but almost. So I was very impressed. It was some entertainment for a little bit of that. And the other thing I want to just mention is that, you know, safety, there is a cost to it. And I know that we are more than willing, as city commissioners, to really fund our police department and our fire department and the EMS and I don't know if any kind of sheriffs. So, you know, I mean, that cost of safety, it's important. And it's also something we realize that, you know, safety is something that we all have to work toward. And I just really appreciate the work that they do. You think about the things that are going around in other places, you know, where they... That safety is something you might have questioned. But I said in Garden City, you know, when Commissioner Dick talked about the optimism, you know, I think that's part of it. We live in an incredible community and we are well protected and have a safe community. So that's all I have.
Commissioner Cessna.
Yeah, I echo the other commissioners on congratulating the mayor on her winning the challenge as retaining the hatchet for another successful year. Just wanted to mention to everybody that today is the last day to register to vote for the upcoming election on November 7th. So if you haven't registered to vote, you still have a little bit of time left to do that. I attended Karmicora Training at the League of Kansas Municipalities during their annual conference about a week ago. Also, I was voted in as the vice president of the Board of Directors for the League of Kansas Municipalities during that conference. So just letting everybody know. I was also asked about a timeline in the community from people wanting to know kind of where the repairs are for the traffic signal at Mary Street and K156. People are kind of concerned that we have red lights flashing, so.
Poll's been ordered. The delivery time for the poll is 14 weeks.
Okay. Sounds good. Now they know. Wanted also mention right quick and get that out there that the Garden City Police Department has entered a contest to win a free digital radar sign for the community. They have a 30-second video explaining the device and how it would benefit our community. I just highly recommend that... I just, uh, highly recommend that you go out and check their social media sites and vote on the video so we could possibly get that device free for our community, so, um, another great opportunity for us and for our community. And just finally, I just want to thank the Garden City Police Department and the Sheriff's Department on their escort of the honor flight out of town on their way to Wichita to fly to Washington DC. It's, uh, I think it was the 97th flight in Kansas, but always nice to see our veterans being recognized and honored. It is a special flight to Washington, especially for those, uh, that have, uh, served our, our country. It's, it's an honor, so, um, just want to thank our, our law enforcement for that great opportunity to recognize them that way and escorting them out of the community. And that's all I have.
All right. Well, and I was gonna mention, um, the league conference and congratulate Roy. I mean, that's, that is really kind of a big thing to be elected to the governing body of the League of Kansas Municipalities, and so it really is an honor, um, that somebody from Garden City is the vice president of that board next year and then will become president, and so that really gives a nice voice out here to southwest Kansas to remind people that we have this great thriving community out here in southwest Kansas and our doors are open for them to walk right through them and shop and stay. Also, I've had an opportunity to go to Senator Moran's Town Hall, um, last week. It was really, um, it's always interesting, especially with everything that's going on in our world, and just hearing from his perspective, what they're working on, kind of his opinion, but then also the opportunity for our citizens to go and ask questions and hear some of the answers and, um, just have that conversation. I mean, it was really, um, I really liked the fact that there were, um, two refugees from Afghanistan and that they came and that they talked to the senator and gave their opinion and, and, um, asked to be, you know, for just, just have that conversation and, you know, to be able to see that in, at work, it was just, it was pretty phenomenal, and so I was just really happy that we had so many people from the community there, uh, which really, I think, bodes well for our engagement and, um, our opportunity to get in front of people and to talk with them. And I think that's something with all of the forums and the meet and greets, the candidate meet and greets that have happened. I know that there's one, uh, on Food Truck Friday on the 20th, and so that is also a good opportunity for the community to come out. There are three local elect, well, more in, in Holka, but, you know, this is a time where there's local elections and, you know, getting to know who's running, but then also just being a participant in that election process. Those local elections are pretty important. They're probably more important, um, than anything, and so just being able to be a part of that's, I think, uh, it's a privilege and it's an honor and it's something that not every citizen gets, so. With that, uh, we can go ahead and, uh, do the executive session. How long will you need for that?
Uh, 10 minutes with Jennifer, Mike, Mayorhead and myself, uh, for the specific purpose of considering property for, uh, city operations.
Okay, and we can probably start that at 55, 56, after it gives us a couple minutes, so, someone like to make that motion?